Okay, good afternoon, everyone. If I could have your attention, please. It is February 6th already, 2019, 4:30 in the afternoon. We begin our council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you're able to please rise and join, I appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you. Amen. Right, right. Amen is correct.
They're mixing church and state there.
Sounds good. Okay, to begin our council meeting, I would like to have a roll call, please. Pat?
Mr. Hamel.
Here.
Mr. Brewster. Mr. Hint.
Here.
Mr. Eggers.
Here.
Mr. Gils.
Yep.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. First on the agenda is approval of the agenda that is before you. There are no changes. With that said, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Mr. Gils.
Aye.
Mr. Eggers.
Aye.
Mr. Hint.
Aye.
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. Second on our agenda is the public forum. This is a time for any public comments. If someone has a comment they would like to share, we invite you to come to the podium, share any comments that you might have with us. No, none? Okay. There are no public comments at this time, so we'll go on into the consent agenda. There are no extra comments. Do you have questions on anything underneath the consent agenda? Media, if you need spelling, I think you should have that in your packet of who the fire applications are, as well as the scat application. Do you have that with you? Okay.
I make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Mr. Hint.
Aye.
Mr. Eggers.
Aye.
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
Mr. Gils.
Aye.
Thank you. There is no old business, so we'll just go right into the new business. Under five, line A, the first item is the general obligation capital loan note, $650,000 for emergency services equipment. At this time, I will now open the public hearing on the matter of the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $650,000 for the general obligation capital loan note in order to provide funds to pay the costs of equipping the fire department, including the acquisition and equipping of a new fire truck and equipping emergency vehicles. We will have a discussion later whether that would be the police vehicles or part of the ambulance. At this time, any writing notices that might have come in? Anything in writing?
Not that much.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open regarding the issuance of the general obligation capital loan note, $650,000. There are no public comments, then? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move. Support.
And a roll call to close the public hearing?
Mr. Hint.
Aye.
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
Mr. Eggers.
Aye.
Mr. Gils.
Aye.
The next part of the general obligation capital loan notes and is approving by resolution instituting the proceedings to take additional action.
Make the motion to approve.
Support.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there's no discussion, I'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Gils.
Aye.
Mr. Eggers.
Aye.
Mr. Hint.
Aye.
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Pat. Next, under new business, line B, approving the hiring of James Lowery as the recreation coordinator. Jake, you want to share anything about James? Start date?
Uh, yeah. You want me to?
Ah, you're good. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, yeah, he'll be starting Monday, February 11th, so he's actually been in a couple of times, and he's already kind of had a head start, so we're excited to have him, so.
Wonderful. And again, this is the split position that we share with NCC.
Yup, correct.
All right. Thank you for the efforts that you and Greta went through with interviewing process, so excited.
Yeah.
I'm glad that wasn't a long time without somebody, so we can fill that gap quickly. So, good job. Thank you. Any questions, then, counsel, on hiring of James Lowery as the recreation coordinator? I need to get my notes organized a little bit. One moment.
I have, I guess, just one question.
Yep.
Is he a recent graduate, or there wasn't much for background? What can you tell me about James?
Um...
Newly graduated?
Well, from his master's degrees.
Okay.
Yup. Just graduated from his master's degree in December.
Okay.
From Winona State, so. That is correct. Correct. Several colors. Yup. Yup.
I don't recall seeing that. Okay.
Excuse me.
James' start date, February 11th? Any other questions regarding the consideration of hiring James Lowery? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move that.
Thanks, Greg.
Support.
Tom has supported. Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hint.
Aye.
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
Mr. Eggers.
Aye.
Mr. Gils.
Aye.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is we have a TIP application for a local business. Kurt, there you are. It's a little different setup. I got to find you. There you are. If you would share with us the exciting news, that'd be wonderful.
Absolutely. So, in front of you, is everybody okay? Waiting for the smacks to mount. Testing. Two seconds. Okay.
Testing. I'm better? Okay, yeah, so you guys should have a copy of a TIP application submitted by Maintainer Corporation here in Sheldon outlining a pretty significant expansion project here for our community. I'd also like to welcome Shelley Morris with Maintainer, who's going to just give us a brief presentation on the proposed project after we take action on the proposed TIP application in front of you. So, just a quick overview on what's in the application. Maintainer, last year, had purchased the old RV Central ground, which is currently located just to the south of their current footprint to facilitate additional growth. And with this project, they're proposing to build approximately a brand-new 29,000-square-foot building that'll be built on that property, and that building will be assessed anywhere between the 1.5 million, excuse me, between 1.5 and $2 million. The total investment of the total project, they're estimating to be right around $2.4 million. This project will also create numerous jobs. They're looking at projecting 25 new jobs within 24 months of this project, which will create an estimated $1.13 million of additional payroll within our community. So, this is going to be an expedited project based on timeline. They're looking at breaking ground as early as April, weather permitting, and I don't want to jinx you, but last April, we had a major blizzard, about April 17th, so...
[laughing]
So, they're looking at breaking ground already in April, and they would like to have the project done already by mid-July. So, and Shelley's going to tell his story a little bit more, based on how the lead time, they're about a year out as far as lead time on the truck body construction, so this is going to really help them and facilitate that demand. So, so per the application you guys will be considering is a request from Maintainer to assist in the project on a five-year sliding scale tax rebate based on a $1.5 million minimum assessment agreement. $1.5 million will generate approximately $40,000 annually in new commercial property tax, and then each year of the five years, we'll rebate back a portion of that. And the total rebate projected as far as this project is concerned is just over $90,000. So, within those five years, however, just keep in mind that the project will generate almost $200,000 in commercial property tax, and of that $200,000 that we collect, we'll be rebating back about 90. So, a good portion of the taxes that will be collected on this will go immediately on the tax rolls for the City of Sheldon. So, with that, that's a quick overview of the application in front of you. Certainly entertain any questions that the council may have, but otherwise, I'll entertain action on the actual application in front of you, and I'll have invite Shelley up to say a few words on behalf of Maintainer.
Any questions, counsel? I'm just excited to see more growth happening. It just seems like yesterday, we were out there, Shelley, the expansion you guys did, and how many years ago was that?
Well, they did one in two, there's been two. Did one in 2015, and then most recently in 2017, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, it's awesome, so thank you. So, if there's no questions, counsel, do we have a motion, then, to approve this TIP application?
So move.
Support.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Hint.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Very good. Thank you. Shelley?
Well, first of all, thank you very much for your support. I can tell you that the process has been very easy, working with Sam and Kurt and Todd. You have an excellent team, and they've really made it quite easy for us. We've got quite a few things we want to do, and we need to do it in a very short order, so we appreciate that. To kind of address the Maintainer growth story, I want to give you the background, and you mentioned the groundbreaking that we did in 2014, and that was the first of an expansion for our main plant that we completed in 2015. But also in 2015, we completed an expansion in Rock Rapids. That expansion was to support our emergency vehicle group, and so we had, you know, two projects going at once, and it wasn't long after that, in 2017, that the Board of Directors approved yet another expansion. We did an expansion on the west side of the property, which is now our R&amp;D area, our truck outfit and our refurb and remount area, and it was not long after that that the growth just continued. The Board of Directors again approved the acquisition of the RV Central property, which we completed in just January of last year, a little over 13 months ago. The significance of that project was that that was our commitment to the City of Sheldon. We had, at that time, also was in the process of divesting and selling a property in Kentucky. It was our confidence that we could grow this business in Sheldon that made us not only acquire that property, but to continue to roll out more growth plans. We've been very fortunate, because with that acquisition, we were able to move our chassis preparation and receiving area, so if you've been by there, you'll see on any given day about 160 chassis. That's just a fraction of the number of trucks that are currently sold that need to be built. So, as that, they roll in and roll out of there, I am estimating today about 450 sold trucks that are yet to be built. What that means is that our lead time continues to get longer, and so as we sit here today, we're selling trucks for 2020. And so, the need for this expansion is based both on what we see in terms of short-term needs, but also our long-term growth plans. We've been very fortunate, I think, to see a very strong economy support our business, but we've also done a lot to grow the business. We have more products, we have a strong product pipeline, and it's just a tribute to the workforce and to the staff that we have. Our commitment to grow here is real, and this current project, the 28,800 square feet, is our largest project to date. So, we're very happy about that, and we're very excited to get started. As Kurt mentioned, we're projecting 25 to 30 new jobs to start. This building is designed, however, to be expandable in any direction, so knowing what I know about what we've done the last five years, five projects and, or four projects in five years, it wouldn't surprise me if I was back here again in a year or two talking about, you know, the next leg of growth for Maintainer. We have a really strong portfolio of products, we've got a really strong and committed ownership group, hats off to them, and then the Board of Directors that continues to support these projects. Not only what you see in terms of the expansion projects, but we're also going through a major capital equipment upgrade in our facility here in Sheldon, as well as in Rock Rapids, so just strong, strong support for what we're doing. But again, thank you very much, it's been a pleasure, and we look forward to groundbreaking. It's, we're planning April 15th, and Kurt, if you didn't jinx us, we'll have you out for something there, and the goal is to be up and running by the end of the year.
Nice. Awesome.
Questions?
Oh, thank you for your...
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you.
Thanks for your commitment.
It's exciting. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I do, I did bring a rendering, it's an artist's rendering of what the facility would look like. Not only is it the largest expansion we've done in a freestanding facility, but it also is the tallest building. This building is 34-foot tall, it's designed to be able to build our bigger products, so when you see this out there in the fall, you'll be able to see it from the highway, and maybe we'll put a billboard on the end or something.
Nice. Yes.
Shelley, if you don't mind me asking, just what capabilities will you have in that building initially?
So, the growth of our business has been in all of our product groups, so the idea is to move two of our main, larger product groups to that building. So, what that means is it'll be essentially start-to-finish manufacturing. The goal is to move our railroad product group down there, which is the larger product we build, along with our lube manufacturing product.
Okay.
That'll make space in our current facility for more growth of the service truck market.
So, you'll have fab, assembly, paint, all of that in there, then?
Actually, the, it'll start with weld through final assembly.
Okay.
We have, with the new capital plan that we have going right now, we'll have capacity in the existing plant to supply both facilities with parts.
Right. Good. Thanks. You mentioned the capital equipment thing. Is that incorporating robotic technology and stuff like that, or is that also part of this, then, too?
Well, actually, most of the capital program right now is about upgrading our cutting and vending capacity. I can say it's state-of-the-art equipment, and it's added both in terms of efficiency but also speed. We are looking at additional robotics capacity. The product we build is custom, so it's very difficult to create standard work for a robot, but it is in the plan, yes.
Good.
Exciting.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Shelley.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on now into line six, our reports, and we will not be hearing from Kent Lorenz, who's not able to make it to our meeting, so we'll just wait to hear his report at another time. So, at this time, I invite Jared Johnson to come on up. You're going to give us an update on the area flood maps. Thank you, Jared.
Jared Johnson with the Bryan County EMA. So, it was during the fall, we received a notification from the Iowa DNR about a new floodplain map that was getting put together at that time. So, I do, I do just want to quickly reference some material from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources website. So, the Iowa DNR and FEMA entered into a cooperating technical partnership agreement dated August 12, 2009, with the goal of collaboratively creating and maintaining accurate and up-to-date flood hazard data for the state. This ushered in the Iowa DNR's floodplain mapping program. The goal of the program is to develop digital FEMA flood insurance rate maps for all 99 counties. So, during, it was probably, it was late August, it was notified by the DNR that they were going to be conducting a webinar and also a in-person meeting, which that meeting took place in Osceola County. The goal of that meeting was to review the draft flood hazard map for O'Brian, Osceola, and Dickinson at that time. I wasn't able to attend the in-person meeting, but I was able to participate in the webinar. I was the only participant in the webinar, which turned out to be okay, because I had plenty of time to ask questions then during the webinar, so that worked out well. But this fall, our, the new map for O'Brian County was in its draft stage. The timeline for this map is draft, and it's going to go into firm production, and then preliminary firm slash appeals period, and then finally post-preliminary processing, and then around 12 months, we'll have effective firm maps. So, what this, what this entails for the local communities, along with O'Brian County, is that we will have brand-new maps that Iowa DNR has established that we can utilize. The maps are actually available to view online right now. If you search Iowa Draft Flood Hazard Map, it will pull up a website that you can click on the icon, and then it allows you to select the county, and then uses a similar mapping feature as Google Maps to look at a territory, and you can see flood hazard areas in that area. There are some communities in O'Brian County that are part of the National Flood Insurance Program. Sheldon is actually a part of National Flood Insurance Program right now, along with the City of Hartley. I did look into the, and Sam emailed me to find out when the last, what is the current effective map for Sheldon, which the current effective map on their website is dated September 18, 1985. So, we are due for a new, a new map. My goal, once this new map gets developed, being a part of National Flood Insurance Program also involves the local community or the county that, you know, if the county joins it, or if a local community becomes part of National Flood Insurance Program, you do need to have a floodplain management coordinates, kind of create a program to reduce or mitigate the effects of future floods. And the other goal is, with the National Flood Insurance Program, it opens up doors for individuals to then be able to apply for flood insurance with insurance providers that do supply that. So, on the National Flood Insurance Program website, there's actually, there's a list of insurance providers that sell flood insurance, and there's also a phone number that individuals may contact if they have questions over flood insurance. So, the goal is to get that information out now. This past year, we had several flood events, which, yeah, trying to mitigate the effects of that for future floods. Any questions for me over that?
Is it a big change from the map before?
I, personally, I've never seen the 1985 map. Yeah. And when I started in 2016, I went through the entire EMA office to search for maps. I haven't seen, I haven't seen a paper copy, I've never seen anything that was scanned. This new map, it is, it's pretty neat. It's neat that anyone can go online and look at the map on their own, and, you know, it shows, shows the entire territory, and you can look at other counties as well that are involved in that map, so...
But Pete, for clarification, there are no buildable areas within the City of Sheldon corporate limits that are in a flood zone on the proposed map. The only thing I may comment on on that website was we had a couple of wells that were shown in the floodplain, and I don't believe we were getting credit for the firms in their city. So, from the city standpoint, that's the only comments I can make.
Good point. Very good.
There's outlined areas that have potentially...
Yup.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you.
And you said, uh, we have to report to Todd, but you were just telling me? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
All right, thanks, Jared. And then next, city manager's report. Anything you want to highlight, touch base on, Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a whole lot to add to what I've written in the report. I want to thank CenturyLink for taking care of the pedestal near the post office. Also wanted to let the council know that Mayor and I had a good visit with Danny Lane, the owner of several buildings in the 300 block of Ninth, and the other day, and working with him to encourage addressing him a number of issues with those buildings, including the roof. So, had a positive conversation and followed up with a courtesy letter, and we hope to hear back from him soon. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Before we get into our budget workshop, I will invite any other comments other than budget, council, or staff, if there's anything other than budget, because we'll get into that next. Brad, Pete, any comments to share?
No.
Tom, Greg?
No.
We're good? Chief? Okay. So, that's all we have on our reports. Thank you very much. At this time, we will move into our next table for the budget portion. Our regular council agenda is over, and we'll go into our budget. Thank you. Let's move. And with the microphone... Anyway. What was your thinking there this evening?
Yeah, we're going to have a budget workshop. Franchise workshop. It's kind of what we're looking at. It's the mayor and I told him to ask him for a motion.
Let's move down. We'll get started, um...
This may be no worse. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, just the cheers, I... So, what others, I pulled their shirt up, and...
Yeah. It's not a big deal. The second item on the...
Sam, where are you sitting?
We would have three. Yeah. One day...
Can I sit over here?
This is the... Maybe you can. Might have been on somebody else's. Yeah, I also had a meeting. I passed on that question, to be honest. We did, and we had one of those... And our... Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's one of the things that we've got to sweep up. Yeah. Everybody else... Yeah. Yeah. We've been trying it for years. Then they hook it in. Yeah. So, we're back there. I tend to want to be someone that answers my time.
Because the growth pattern is not consistent with what you expect, unless there's some [inaudible]. Yeah. Yeah. You know, I don't know...
Yeah, Todd, where are you?
The summer's... All right, the party's ready. We thought we saw the [inaudible]. There was a couple cars. Someone had helped me. Yeah. Yeah. If you want to go again. Hey, Mark? Mark? He did. He did it. Yeah, thank you. And I got a packet from... Sure. I think this is a point, if I'm spot on, if they... There's a lot of common sense, so it's to characterize something like all... Three. I have a generation, they're... Yes. I didn't turn on the government. They think conservative approach is to say, you know, this is in charge. I just got to see... That's all I have. She was... 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 She was...
We are gonna send the food out, so that way we can... Sam, where are you sitting?
I passed on that question, to be honest. We did, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. You know, I don't know.
Yeah, Todd, where are you?
All right, the party's ready.
If you want to go again.
Hey, Mark? He did, he did it. Thank you. And I got a packet from... Sure.
I think this is one of the most common spaces. There's a lot of common sense. They just characterize something like all... Three. I have the generation. Therefore, yes. Things conservative approaches to say, you know, it isn't charged. She was... I think this is... It'd be nice to hear it, and then we could weigh in on it. But the key to it, no matter what.
I'm willing to go here.
That's my...
No, no, it's not the same thing.
Mister, Mister... So sweet.
There we go.
Do you want to start eating now as we go, or you?
I don't care.
Okay, then we, let's, let's do that. Yeah.
Okay, we want to cover this then. What's that?
I'll come with Sam, who we're gonna see.
You know, you could tell people, we could, if we wanted to, but we don't.
No.
That's right.
There's one more thing, you know, when they applied for the FCC for the radio station, they made arrangements with the citizen bank to rent the second story in that building. And it took two, three years to get through, you know, everything. And by that time, the FDIC had taken over the upstairs. I, I came here. Yes, the following year. So, they bought the corner building, or the radio station rented the corner building where Adventure is. And moved the FCC down there so that the radio station could...
FCC, do they have, is that like, they had a county office in every county?
Me and the FCC, Federal Committee of Representatives?
Why, why would they have an office in Sheldon anyway?
FDIC, Federal Department. Close the bank down.
No, just art galleries and museums. Gulf shores and stuff. The weather was okay. Not fabulous, but a lot better than here. Really a fascinating area, though.
You're right here next to me, Lord. I think I have a fever. I think I have a fever. All right, since Tom is right next to me, I don't have to keep looking for him. I was looking for Tom, wondering when we could start.
Here I am.
He's just been busy. I'm getting a little... That's my excuse.
No comment.
No comment.
I'll just leave that alone.
Testing?
Four, seven, five.
So, we'll get into our budget workshop, which I just sort of left off, which he said you were gonna go over. With Ange being sick, I am going to invite Sam to walk us through much of this here, all right, with that, Sam? See if not, we'll be taking a motion to adjourn. So, we're gonna pick up with balancing the general fund portion of the budget, and Sam, I'll let you take the lead as we go through the workshop.
Thank you, Mayor. This is close to the, there's a couple more bites of the apple remaining in the budget discussion. That'd be mainly the public hearing or... By then, everything needs, really needs to be finalized. If there's any outstanding items tonight, there probably will be, especially since Angie not being here, there's going to be a few items that need to be deferred. That's okay. She can file the state budget form, publish the hearing, and then we can still make, still make some changes on March sixth. We need to have everything ratified March sixth, so we can meet them on the March fifteenth. In your packets here, which everybody has, media has too, I have six items to discuss. This is not meant to be a comprehensive list. If there's, you're certainly welcome to bring up any other items. We could just start at the, start at the beginning.
So, you want to have a copy, Brad? I have an extra one right here if you don't. Got one, okay. We're good? Ty, Frank? Okay.
Ken, if we can start with item number one, which is the big one, balance of the general fund portion of the, of the budget. January thirty, we discussed deficits, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars and change. And we've compiled a, a list of items, which is pages three and four of your, of your packet. It was, it was challenging. If you accept all of those items, some, some which are more painful than, than others, you will have a surplus of just under three percent, forty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight hours. League of Cities recommends a higher cash balance than that. I'm more comfortable with at least a ten percent cash balance. It isn't reasonable to get to ten percent this year. I do think it is reasonable to get to two to three. I do recommend that be, consider the, that list, and if you accept all of them. The positive in this is that Angie and I are conservative when it comes to the revenue projections. Revenue will probably come in higher than what's projected, but we do not want to become exuberant, overly exuberant about those projections. So, I do recommend accepting this list. Doesn't mean this is final. You can come back and do a budget amendment later, later on. I also want to, I put it in one of the reports previously, and I wanted to fully disclose to you that we, local option sales tax, I checked with the League of Cities on this, and the nineteen ninety-five ballot measure allows for community betterment. And I asked my contact at the League of Cities about the appropriateness of using it for recreation salaries. And it is appropriate to use it for recreation salaries. And you need to know that ninety-seven thousand dollars of, of salaries, which is normally in the general fund, is coming out of local options. So, I wanted us all go into this eyes wide open, because that is a, a policy shift from how it has been done before. Your local option sales tax, our local option sales tax here in Sheldon has effectively, effectively functioned as the communities, or as the cities, unencumbered cash or reserve. And this is a change, even if this budget passes as is, and also includes the general fund cuts. You will have a approximate balance in local option sales tax of just under thirty thousand dollars plus one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar CD that was mentioned in the last meeting. I mean, right now, we're talking about general fund, so I just wanted to mention.
And are you looking for, how much do you should take action?
We can do it, we can do it by consensus. If that's appropriate, if there's no, if there's no opposition, then we will take this as approval. And then we can move on to item number two. Stan?
Not, not that it's a big deal, but you mentioned they would have a thirty thousand dollar balance plus the, the investments of one sixty-seven. Would it be considerably lower than that, because all the extra requests totaled around forty or something, if I recall? We worked out a balance of about fifty. So, would it be down closer to ten? From what I recall from the twenty-one, twenty-two meetings? It's not that huge difference one way or the other, but I think it would be lower.
Right, because if we plug in those extra requests, Minshew, right...
Of course, all those were to come from Boss.
Eighteen.
Thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. That would get you down to about twelve thousand then, plus the one sixty-seven.
Comments, council, or can, do you want to keep moving on to the next step?
If I could mention on the salaries real quick. We may need to defer, there's a question that's come up on some of the salary adjustments. And some of that's going to depend on what we decide with item number two. So, if, depending on how item number two goes, we may be opening up item number one just a little bit, so if I'm...
Let's just keep going into, let's go into number two, and then we'll see where that brings us. Ready to move on? Thank you.
In your budget book, I laid out five different options. We have regarding employee insurance. I won't go over each of those options in detail, but I will hit the highlights. Essentially, we have the situation here where approximately half of our employees would pay significantly more for health insurance, but the other half does. The city manager, I want to encourage us to work all the time. It's hard to, it's hard to address this all at once, but there is a disparity there, and it's something that really does need to be addressed. My, I, options four and five, I've, I've discussed both with, with MICA. Also, discussed, not, not negotiated, but discussed with a union representative, you know, to see how these options, options four and five will play. There does appear to be good support for, for, for those options. I think the most palatable option is probably option number four, which is where we would ask non-union employees to pay five percent of their insurance, and then draw the memorandum of understanding to the union contracts to freeze the union contribution level of fifteen percent rather than going to twenty. You can see the chart down below, it makes that very easy to calculate, the, the third number in from, from the left.
So, it's under your department presentation tabs, just in case you're wondering.
Yeah, page four of my report.
Pages in. Under options four and five.
So, it is very common for employees to pay at least some for their, for their insurance. And that appeared to be the intent when this came up so many years ago, it just wasn't applied to non-union. I do not recommend trying to go all at once to, to put them the same as the union. That's why I was hoping we could freeze the union at eighty-five percent and bring eighty-five percent city contribution, and bring non-union to ninety-five percent down from a hundred. So, you have a ten percent disparity rather than a twenty percent disparity.
So, did you work to get them equal eventually?
Well, that's ultimately up to you, but I would say my goal, Brad, would be that I really would like to have them equal. You know, eighty, eighty-five or ninety, you know, feel, feels right, and that's been my experience, that that's, that that is a, a good number. We also could look at the deductibles. I talked to Tom Boss today, and if you would change, if we change the deductibles from two fifty, two fifty-five hundred to five hundred, one thousand, you're, you're looking at approximately two hundred and fifty dollar savings per insured person. So, not just per employee, but per insured person on the plan. We figure about, about thirty percent is the rule of thumb for maximizing, for maximizing the deductible usage. You're looking at maybe seven or eight thousand dollars a year savings, which is, which is real, but it also is a great deal. So, I, because there's been, because this is the first step that we're taking, I wouldn't, I feel most comfortable with recommending option four. And if I, if I can yield to MICA, MICA and I have been working on this, and we can talk a little bit about how we would do this.
Yeah, sure.
It's, as Sam suggested, ideally, and I underscore ideally, it would be through something like a simple memorandum of understanding. The key to that, of course, is all parties agreeing. The challenge we have is that we're working in the context of a collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated. And if you recall, that was approved and put in place right on the eve of some fairly significant, very significant changes of collective bargaining law. And so, we've reached out, Sam has reached out to PRB to get an opinion on if and how they feel the appropriate way of doing that is, so we don't run afoul of any state law. We think that there is a common sense solution, but again, we want to be cautious about taking that on until we get feedback from PRB as to what their thoughts are. Oh, PRB is the Public Employer Relations Board. And so, if there's a union issue, which that covers a broad spectrum of things, that's typically the avenue it flows through. They're in charge of all things related to chapter twenty of the Iowa Code, and chapter twenty has to do with unions and such.
So, I reached out, I'm a mayor. I re, I reached out to my contact at the League of Cities, and he said that this has come up with other, other cities as well. On behalf of a number of cities, he was reaching out to PRB to find, to find out more. There does appear to be a, there does appear to be precedent for a memorandum of understanding. Sioux City, for one example, other, other cities have done it as well. And we, we, we wanted to proceed carefully, because we would prefer not to be a test case for PRB.
And the, the reason it's an issue is because we now have two categories of employees, public safety and non-public safety. And they have different rules about what's, can be legitimately negotiated or not. Insurance is mandatory subject for one category, but it's not a subject at all for the other. And how those mesh together, and what you can do after you've made an agreement, hasn't been tested yet post-new law. So, that, that's why the extra caution of reaching out to League of Cities and PRB to get their feedback.
And this, this is why the budget, as it's constructed, is a status quo, where it's hundred, hundred percent participation for, by the city for non-union employees, and eighty percent participation by the city for union employees. And we, I would like to have your support to pursue option four, and because you have almost half and half, but it really is going to affect the budget at that line. Do, do think it is, it is reasonable to have our non-union employees, which would include me, paid some for insurance.
And I know, we got these discussions last year at budget time, and correct me if I'm wrong, but did our insurance program with the staff change last year? Because I remember Tom was in a lot, and I think the reason we didn't move on that was because we knew changes were coming from insurance, and what kind of different packages or coverage or whatever premiums were going to be that was all changed. So, it was something that the conversation started last year. We didn't go anywhere because of those changes. So, the conversation isn't new, we're just picking up kind of sort of where we left off last year and what it might could look like. And then that's where we also, we're looking at the salaries comparable for the staff that we can have, and making sure they're up to par. So...
And one of the reasons that I had supported Angie's request for a little bit higher increase for her three staff was because of this issue. And that we, I felt that I was hoping the council would support having non-union employees pay ninety, pay five percent. And we did that, and we feel it would be reasonable that it would have earned to theirs. And if you look at comparison, I think that could be justified for those three employees that work for Angie.
I would recommend option four, council thoughts? The two options that are there?
I guess maybe I would like a little more clarity as far as our long-term goal here. We're talking about a first step here towards what, eventually, what is the, what is the long-term goal? We're talking about a first step here towards what eventually, what is the long-term goal? In the end for this, and if so, if it's further than option four, which I think it is, this is the first step. What is step two, and step three, and step four like? From a, you know, from a proposal perspective. Because I think both the city and employees need to have a little better idea of what to expect as we continue to move down that path. And if we are utilizing wage to offset expense, I'm not sure how that would look after three or four steps. You know what I'm saying? Because in the end, as a city, we're trying to control and manage costs along the way as well. So is there anyone out there in the League of Cities that are further along on that transition? That we could look at and see what they've used?
Right. I will find out for you. I think the first step, Tom, is that we have a, first of all, and I've thought of this myself, and I have to be careful when we talk to unions about what our long-range goal is. Because I'm not exactly sure that, what that will be, because that depends on negotiations. And I don't want to get into unfair labor practice by saying this is what the goal is. When we're asking them to sign a memorandum of understanding. Because our goal right now is to reduce an unfairness and a disparity that we have between our non-union and union employees. And really what you have is, right now you have two distinct classes of employees in a group, full-time group of 30 people. And that is a difficult situation. And that needs to be addressed professionally speaking. As I think 85 or 90% participation by the community is a reasonable goal. And also, at some point, we need to look at the deductibles. Over the coming year, we're going to need to look at the deductibles. You know, in my prior life, there was discussion, prior community I was in, about 750, 1500 being the deductible there, and that being a very low deductible. So the deductibles here are very low. But they're also an important recruiting tool. And we have potentially three or four police officers that we're going to need to replace in the next two to three years. And those positions are already hard to fill. And so we don't want the pendulum to swing down the other direction. Because our wages are fairly competitive, competitive. That really gives a competitive edge. The health insurance, it's also an additional cost. I didn't really answer your question, but I kind of understand.
It's not an easy situation, I understand. But I guess where I'm trying to go with this a little bit is that if we don't, if we're not able to kind of look at what our, what the goal is and how we kind of would like to get there, then the employees will not, they'll be kind of left in limbo.
Well, if I can ask.
And then they'll come up with their own idea on how they're going to get there. And usually the two don't match.
Let me answer it this way without getting into an unfair way. My goal for non-union employees is that I would like to see approximately a 90%, 10% employee contribution. Be okay with 85, but I would prefer 90, because that helps us keep our competitive edge. And then without getting into an unfair labor and practice situation, I would like to treat as much as possible, our unions the same as non-unions. Is that better?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, good questions. Any other questions, council?
Do you have a consensus on number four? MICA goal we want to make.
Consensus then, as Sam is, are we on board with moving forward with that option? We have to, like you say, two steps on. Then MICA, we're going to move on. Thank you for hanging out for that. I'm going to grab a sandwich. You're welcome to.
I'll just bring your kids back for some bread.
We're going to need some chips. What's the name of your team on Live Healthy Iowa? Take the chips, cookies too. Well, let's see what hike it takes, and then we'll decide what we're going to do. We will take a little break. Now's your chance to, we'll take a little break after we know we'll come back to that. So help yourself. There is different kinds of subs, chips, cookies. Yes, Todd?
I just wanted, as a point of good news, maybe point out that by switching insurance, as you mentioned, there is a substantial savings and premiums this year. 30 to 40 thousand dollars. 37, 38 thousand dollars. So that's business. That saves everybody a little money.
Exactly. Because the road we were going on was really.
That was escalating much quicker than that current plan.
So thanks to Tom, Tom worked hard on that last year, I think, in different scenarios. Thanks for pointing that out. Okay, let's break, eat, chips, cookies, sandwiches, help yourself. Beverages are in the fridge. Yeah, so, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm taking on the same sheet. So that discussion played out.
All righty, here we go.
If we go home hungry, it's going to annoy you.
Because there's going to be a lot of.
Done as in?
I don't know, too bad.
I can't get you just like 30.
Sure you can, I'll tell you.
It's tied. I was gonna say, that would be smaller right there. You missed your memo. Gotta be prepared.
It is getting further. Yeah, I understand.
I got home.
And I mean, I wasn't home for five minutes before. So, what do we want? Preparing something. Big stuff. Well, is that it? Do you have pork chops? Yeah, I do actually.
Can you get a break? Usually, I can get the cookies.
Matt, you should go now because you got.
Hey, there's another layer, there's another underneath, another layer. You see something else, you like that layer?
There's too many choices already.
You may not have one of each.
I'm just holding you together there, teammate buddy. Somebody's got to keep us up. No, I'm just going to eyeball it.
You're just going to eyeball?
And see what I, I'm salivating already. Yeah, the best. You know, when you go grocery shopping and you're trying to eat healthier and you buy all these fresh veggies, pepper is like two for five bucks.
Right on Gulf Shore.
Actually, I'll get a Doris for it.
Picture Marvin, reason watching you guys eat, just getting angrier.
I'm glad you said it, because I was thinking.
You're live again, Mayor.
All right, lunch break, supper break, dinner break, whatever you want to call it. Keep eating. If you're hungry, there's more up there. We are going to continue going into three on our budget workshop. We'll get into there. Go ahead, take your way.
Thank you, Mayor. If you turn to this page and your work book has the highlights on it, this has the, it's in the packet, the packet. Okay. Hand it out today. Okay, so Kevin Miller sent his regrets, unable to be with us tonight. Had a family matter that came up, so told me no problem, I covered for him. And we, the top chart, there was a little bit confusion on this last time, so we made sure on the same page. The top chart is already in the budget, fire department page. It's already accounted for. The SCAP proposal, the original ambulance team proposal is right below it. We didn't have a lot of numbers to back it up at that time, so was agreed that we would take a look at it. And then what we came up with down below is the recommendation. There are not a lot of communities that have an ambulance team that's structured like ours. So it's difficult to come up with comparables. Sioux Center, a little bit bigger than us, they do have an ambulance team. They do not pay their officers at all, but they pay a point system. A point system and a per-call basis for, excuse me, when they go out on calls. They do have a full-time employee in Sioux Center. So if you look down below.
They have just one full employee.
One full-time employee, nine in. Fiscal year 14, 15 is when the last raises occurred. And there was one raise for the paramedics that occurred in 15, 16. So what I did in the spreadsheet here is I had an invisible row up top where I, it compounded 2.5, 2.5% rate increases all the way across. And the last column is what you get for the hourly pay rates down below. You see an asterisk where I discussed those with Kevin. His recommendation and request was to round those down to make it easier for calculation. Okay, does that make sense? And so really, your overall increase for the salaries is 1,300, it's 13,916 minus 12,300. So it's about 1,600 dollars increase in the wages. Fire Department wages are a little bit more, but again, the fire department waited a lot longer for increases. And Brad and I have discussed this, and over the coming year, we're going to take another look at it. So if you're in agreement, you can go ahead and include this bottom chart down below in the budget.
Sounds good. Have it circled, anyone?
I also, the next two pages or three pages I want you to be aware of. It's, I have the K-roll sheets for six months of both fire and SCAP. SCAP is listed first, fire is listed second. SCAP has two handwritten pages. As you can see, there's some significant wages there. It hasn't been brought up whether we can pay the SCAP part-time staff monthly instead of every six months. The answer to that is if we start doing that, your costs are going to increase significantly because you have IFRS. Because your Iowa retirement system has a requirement of consecutive, consecutive months and quarters. And so that is the reason why Sheldon has paid twice a year. And that's something we would continue to do is pay twice a year. This budget does not account for IFRS at all. So, any questions on that?
Absolutely.
We have a short time.
We're good to run with that recommendation?
I have option four.
Yes.
Option four is elected official salaries. Yeah, this came up as a topic last time. Can we discuss this time? I have a salary comparison courtesy of my colleague Penny Clayton in Estoril for Southern A's Salary Survey every year on a number of positions. And Sheldon hasn't participated in that in the past, but they will, will starting this year. Because the only reason, the only way you get this salary study is if you participate. But I saved it, so I added it. So anyway, so you can see, you know, where council and mayor, how that is compensated. And clearly, your positions are community service and labor of love, right? But you certainly do have the ability to do an increase. The way it would work is you would budget an increase, and then there has to be an intervening election before it takes effect. So the increases do not take effect until the Oath of Officer, Minister, whoever's up for election or reelection this fall. Does that make sense? So if you want a simple recommendation going on the basis of this, you could increase your council paid at $50 and mayor paid to the median, which is 6,000. That would have, would have a fairly minimal impact on the budget. And you could, if they wanted to think so on this, and wait for next year to discuss it too. But your elections are every two years, so you would then have to wait another year and a half to discuss it next February.
I'm gonna throw it out there. I like a now man number one. And then $40, it would take off to $29 for the special meetings and $40 for all the community meetings. That's my recommendation.
So comment one, $50 council meeting, $25 special meeting, $40 committee meeting.
$50 council meeting, $50 or $30 committee meetings. You spend just as much time in committee meetings as you do council meetings. Or more.
Do you say drop the 25?
Do you get, council, do you get pay when you go to your committee meetings, like library or museum?
That's what I said.
That's my recommendation.
Brad, you brought this up based upon the fact that you thought that this might help service some incentive for more interest.
Yeah, maybe it'll spur somebody.
So now that you've looked at comparison a little bit there, and we're looking at some adjustments, as you say, is you still feel that that's an incentive?
Instead of being behind the cart, we're ahead of the cart. Instead of being the follower of the leader.
I'm just wondering how we, how do we present that?
I don't think you'll have a problem.
To the community. No, I'm saying, not the passing, but to use it as the incentive. How do we do that?
The media's listening to us now, and I'm sure it's going to be headlines that council wants more money for going to meetings. Right?
You're listening? He's playing a game.
You know, it's, it, it's difficult for council to make a decision like this, even though it's, it has relatively little impact on the budget. My recommendation to you, and having once been, um, an elective official, is that, is that it is reasonable to do what Brad has suggested. And it's further reasonable when you look at the state of Iowa, and, um, what a number of communities pay, what a number of county seats pay, their county, county board members, which often includes health insurance. That's fair. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to pitting anybody against anybody, it's just the reality of it, is that, is that, that is, um, that's a discussion that often comes up, because it's hard, hard to find people to fund for, um, for municipal offices.
If they like it since last meeting, if they don't like it, then report us out.
Other comments, thoughts? Bradley's comment one, for that, on that report.
The forty-dollar committee meeting would have, that would have a little bit of impact, we'd have to figure out how many that would be, and it'd be a tracking process, probably a sheet that you would turn in. We can handle that. I can talk to Angie, we could have more of a, get an idea of the additional cost for that. I would support funding that, and you could also... We'd have to define committee.
That's what I was just saying.
You know, you run into, you have, 'cause you have ad hoc meetings all the time.
Any meeting that you're appointed to?
The appointed, the appointed standing committees, like the Pavilion Board. If you're a voting member or a liaison, appointed by the mayor or by the council, and confirmed by the council. But if I would say for ad hoc committees, you know, it's, they're probably not.
Well, I'm just supportive, it helps to spur interest in the community, certainly.
It can't hurt.
I don't think it's...
I don't think it's... A little bit more money, but...
And to do this in the year when we're cutting up, without the list of cutbacks.
It's a wage. I realize that. We're not giving, we're not cutting wages.
How many of us took his job for the money?
I understand that, but I'm looking at, trying to convince somebody to run.
And I looked at the list, it said her nine hundred dollars.
Could be worse.
I think in, in the position I'm in, as mayor, six thousand, four thousand, eight hundred, I'd do it for nothing. I mean, when I ran, that's just me, when I ran, I didn't even think about a salary. So, if someone is looking at the money and they think that'll help entice them, so be it, but if they're in it for the money, shame on them. That's just my thoughts.
I don't think any of us are interested in, in extra money for what we've already done, which is take on opportunity to serve the community. But if, but if it does help to please spur interest in other people that are, then I think we should at least look. I'm not saying I'm ready to look at us on it, but I think, I would like to know how we would use it to market, how would we actually market it? To find out whether or not it gets some extra. Because I kind of, Greg, and Pete too, is I'm not really sure if it's gonna have an impact on anybody's opinion on whether they're gonna devote time towards government or not.
Yes.
It requires an ordinance amendment, both, both wages are set in ordinance. So, simple ordinance, I would, I would work out the draft ordinance and put it on first reading, and then you could have that discussion. And then, once it passes third reading, it would be, it would not go into effect until after the next election. I would confirm that with Lanka, but that's my understanding of how it works.
And we would need to define that committee, have that sort of, 'cause we don't have that set up now. Um, you, so council is paid per meeting and not special meeting, or just meeting is meeting? Is that how it is?
Right, right now, you're paid forty-five dollars a meeting.
Forty-five a meeting, whether it's special, regular council. But it doesn't include the committees that you serve on, like park, or museum, or libraries, etc., okay? Just for...
Of course.
Sorry, I never really... We never really looked closely at it either. Alright.
All of the standing committees are, and none of those positions are paid, which is hard. Standing committee, everybody that serves on the stand, on a committee, that's correct, is voluntary.
Right.
They've made that choice. As a council member, the argument made with, you're appointed, you don't have, you have to do it, you don't have...
But I think there would be, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
I don't know, it feels right about it.
Talking about a year of belt tight, cutting back. By the way, we're gonna... And I know it's not a lot of money.
But it's the message that you can... I, I, I'm not... There's nothing, I can't, I don't...
I think that's kinda where I'm at, too.
I don't...
Like you say, it's not that big a deal, but as a recruiting tool. Maybe do the fifty and skip the committee meetings for now, which would probably trigger more ordinance changes, because I was just thinking about the Pavilion ordinance, which I recently read, and if it's in there that members of the Pavilion Board shall serve without remuneration, well, that would include the two voting council members, so unless we amend that ordinance, we're not allowed to pay the meeting of the Pavilion Board member. So, maybe it's cleaner just go with the fifty dollars a meeting, or the extra meetings. But it looks like Estoril and Dewitt are the only two communities on the list that pay for committees.
And then that would cover all of our council meeting and our special council meetings, because that's considered council meeting, same rate. A meeting is fifty dollars. That sounds, I think that sounds better. Thoughts on that?
Quite a range of... Twelve dollars.
All the way up to a hundred dollars.
That's great.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, like there's some that don't have an annual...
Salary for a... Right.
See what I mean, they don't get paid? What I mean is they didn't respond. They didn't respond to that, they didn't respond to that question.
Kind of make it happen, consensus to me, I guess. But that doesn't mean you can't look at the marketable value of the three districts.
Okay, yeah, bring it forward for first reading, after.
A respectable sign, but I can't...
I know it's not a lot of money, but what is Angie supposed to answer? She's gonna want some kind of correction, whether it's gonna go up a little bit or a lot of concern.
There's no consent on it.
So just leave it as is, which is forty-five dollars a meeting. And then we can discuss an ordinance change later. It wouldn't affect, it would affect only half the year anyway.
Now, I don't know how we get a read on how it incentivizes people to get it longer, but we should at least make it a common sense to try to figure that out. Then we got something to think about. There's your return on investment.
Are we okay moving on then? Or why did that pass, and that, and that...
Uh, number five, uh, we just need your consensus on this to move forward, this, this would require a resolution to be approved later by the city council. Basically, we have approximately two point three nine four million dollars in that, in the TIF account. And this balance cannot be spent on purposes other than paying off our TIF debt. It serves two purposes, that keep all this money in there, one is, is, is that you, the, the two notes are lower interest rates, you can reinvest the money and, and, and get some interest. The other reason is, is that on paper, it makes the city's cash position look better than it really is. The reality is, you can't spend this money on police officer, police cars, and ink pens, or whatever, this is only for paying off TIF debt. And, um, our bond council, and Angie and I have talked about this, our bond, bond council has advices, do not have all of this cash on hand. The purpose of tax increment financing is, once you have money back from the income, and you pay, pay off the bond, there's two bonds that are callable in June. Uh, one is a, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars in twenty thirteen downtown street, street state debt, and the other is one point four six five million in twenty thirteen Sheldon Crossing debt. And once that's paid down, your debt capacity, your constitutional government drops from ninety-four point four two percent for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, which is last year, to, um, approximately sixty-five percent for fiscal year nineteen, twenty, which feels pretty good in this. And what that allows us to do is facilitate planning for the, for the next budget cycle, which will likely include the need for additional, uh, water tower, um, street repairs, perhaps crossroads north phase two, there's a number of items that should be prioritized for the coming year. So, wanted to get your support on that. And how the, the only way that potentially negatively affects us is, is that we did have one case, which was with Dollar General, where we did, did a, an upfront grant from that fund. This would limit, eliminate the, the upfront grants. What we usually do is what we did tonight, with maintainer, is do the assessment agreement, and, uh, if money comes back in, as it's, as it's generated. Yeah, I've heard, and I've talked about this, you know, pay with...
Yeah, most of our requests haven't been for that upfront TIF, but there'd still be some money in there, right? I mean, even the Dollar General one wasn't a significant amount, we're talking like seventy thousand, eighty thousand or something like that. It was small, it was a small run.
Maybe there'd still be two hundred.
Yeah, so...
I'm not sure of the number, but...
There was enough leverage there to give us some wiggle room, and to your point, each year that'll continue to grow, that hash balance will grow, so provide us with flexibility. So I'm okay, comfortable with that, two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, thanks, Ray.
Plus you got more debt capacity, you know, it's a big spot.
Right.
Exactly, isn't that right? Did you guys hear that over there?
It's a bright spot.
It is, isn't it?
It's a great scene.
Alright, just making sure you're paying attention. Did you have a cookie yet?
Nope.
That's wonderful, so let's move on into local aisle option sales tax.
Alright, so, there's been some discussion about the idea of reducing pressure on local option sales tax by paying for one of the police cars from local option, returning the purchase of the second police car to fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, it's, uh, that, that can be done, just so you know, and I put it in my report earlier, from earlier this evening, if we did that, and I had mentioned to Jason and AOS community that we may want to do that. He did not realize at the time that he drafted the language that Fire Department and the ambulance department are two different departments. He thought ambulance was part of, of Fire, which is a reasonable thing to conclude, and so, he offered to, uh, no charge to us. And if we decide we wanted to do this, no problem, he would do the paperwork for us, uh, for free. We would do a set for hearing on the February twenty agenda, on March sixth, we'd have a simple public hearing. We added the word ambulance department into the original, um, authorizing resolution so that we could do this. So, I know Lyle and I have talked, and he, I think he's talked to some of you, I'd like to give him an opportunity to weigh in on this, uh, concept, you know. That's, you know, one of the reasons that this concept was being looked at is because there's, you know, we're looking at a seven-year note for fire truck and two police cars, which probably have three to four years of life, and that, that was one of the reasons why this, I think, why this option was discussed, also to reduce pressure on local option sales tax. And it will have a negative impact on the police department. Lyle, you could talk about that.
Well, yeah, and I think I presented some of that to you guys in the past. We put roughly seventy-five thousand miles on our vehicles every year. That's spread out of all three vehicles. And we can try to play around a little bit with which vehicle we put the miles on. One of the issues is that our current car cameras, we have, all three of our patrol vehicles are equipped with them, but they only work in two of the vehicles. I'd be pretty reluctant to, I, I've just got the one with a hundred and seventy thousand, that's kind of the one that I typically use, and it, the camera's not working in that one. So, we have to be conscious of that. I guess the main thing that I would say is, you know, if we buy one police car, we'll get rid of that twenty fourteen, and then we'll move the, the twenty sixteen, that's got a hundred and, I think a hundred and six now on it. We'll, we'll move that one, you know, in, into that spot. Just understand that next year, depending on how the mileage thing looks, we might be asking for two police vehicles.
I guess the camera, you have budgeted this year for replacing the camera, so you could put a new camera in that, the car you've been, not replaced, correct?
Yes, yes.
Do you approve it for one?
Yeah.
And then the other question is, why don't we have a rotation of buying a car every year?
You know, we've...
I mean, that's good practice.
I agree.
You look happy about that.
It would be good practice, the amount of miles you're putting on it.
Yeah. I get a little nervous, they're, they're, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, Brad.
No.
They're, they're, uh, I mean, they're a police vehicle, they, they, they get some pretty hard use, they, they get thrown into pursuits and whatever else. It's a little different than having them on a pop car that we take back and forth to the grocery store. Um, so it's really imperative that we keep them in tip-top shape, there's a lot of departments that won't run their cars to this amount of miles, I'll tell you that.
And then, that's where I talked about, we need to have a plan. And it seems like we've never had a plan, it's always been at, yeah. And we need to have a plan for our, our expenses.
Long term.
Long term, rather than one year, two year, three year.
You know, and so, yeah, we've, we kinda kicked the can down the road a little bit last year, when we did buy a car.
And now, I don't think that was ever brought to the council about buying a car. So, yeah, I'm thinking...
Maybe that's just culture, you know? Maybe some assumption without...
Yeah.
And I brought it up just to, to help out local office and sales teams. You know, come to push the shovel, if we blow one of those cars up, then we gotta buy one next year.
Yeah, you know, you always stand a, a chance, I remember on one of the other ones, we ran with a fair amount of miles, and all of a sudden, we had a pretty major transmission repair. You know, we didn't account for any extra money in our, you know, repair, maintenance, vehicles and equipment budget, you know? I hate to just buy cars for the sake of buying cars, we've always been really careful not to buy unless we absolutely need, needed to. I know there's departments out there that'll run up to eighty thousand miles in their trip, we've never done that.
I think there's, I think your department deserves to have something to rely upon, capital expenditure. Fire Department needs it, SCAP needs it, so, I think, as Brad's talking about, police cars, in my head, we're talking all of them. And so, I'll be, I'll be going to incremental and be able to absorb those costs that we know are coming, that are needed. And I think that, that's gonna be a further discussion as far as how we do that in revenue per se. But I, I agree, and I know I'm new to council, I'm new to this issue. But for us, that's our scratch, our heads every year. But for us that are scratching heads every year about whether or not we can come up with enough money to get a police car or an ambulance or a parter truck or whatever else, just doesn't sound to me. Now, we may have to, oh, you know, come up with a plan. It may not look exactly like we think it is for each one, but if we can at least get the plan going, then it'll be sustainable.
I like that idea, that, of some kind of a system. I hesitate, financing something for seven years. That doesn't make sense.
That's not really what we do, finance the fire truck, kind of through police cars, yeah.
Right. I understand.
So, I mean, it's.
Say that, but that's not really what we do.
We are thinking stage paying cop cars on first, since the fire trucks in the last one here, you pay that off the second.
We save some money because we could. So, and I'm, that's fine, I'm fine with it.
I just.
I don't think a lot of ambulance for seven years.
So, can you go over the six fifty of the loan that we're getting? So five fifty would be for the fire truck?
The way it stands now, that's in the budget, is, and what was approved tonight, was five fifty for the, five hundred and fifty-two for the fire truck, and the remainder for two police cars, with delivery to come in November of this year. November of nineteen. If you make the adjustment, you have a hundred thousand dollars from, for the ambulance costs come out of the, out of the note, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar note. And you move the two police cars, one goes away, and the other, other police car is paid for from local option.
Yes, all right.
So if you don't do anything, then what you did earlier tonight stands. And you're done, and you'll just keep an eye on, on, on local option.
So, said, fire truck, two police cars, and ambulance, you're talking?
Now, the ambulance is, ambulance, the two hundred thousand dollar ambulance is coming out of, out of local option.
Right, in the, in the budget as it stands.
In the, in the budget as it stands.
But we're going to divert a hundred thousand dollars in the note instead of loss for that ambulance.
Right, and then one, one police car goes away for a net.
Right.
Costs deferment fifty thousand dollars. Okay.
And then another car next year on the budget, possibly two. But in the meantime, we can work on a better plan on replacement of those vehicles. So is that, is that the route, the consensus of the route that we would like to take then?
I guess we could question whatever we want, and balance of loss to me. Is it okay the way the budget is?
The balance of loss also depends on when we take delivery of new ambulance.
Right.
Because one of the policy items that we need to discuss is where we put the new ambulance, if we have it.
That needs to be discussed.
That needs to be discussed, so the actual order of the ambulances, that's a, that has to be, that has to be approved by the council anyway, so you leave that in the budget, and then when it comes time up here, we'll have some information for you on where we're, where we're going to put it, or put one of the older ambulances.
Right.
Because as I understand, we're not going to trade one off.
Yes, I believe as a reason they would like to keep the two, get a third.
We'll go further down the road to sort of some other point.
Right, yep.
Where does the Archer ambulance, if it's holding, is we have a discussion on that. And then we're not interested in that, that's off the table, we're just.
It could be that ambulance used to be ours. Then it was sold, and then it was.
No, no.
No, we're not.
No, no.
The Archer, the Archer ambulance used to be ours, and then we sold it, or surplused it. And then a cot was put in it, and.
No one bring that here, because I don't quite remember. So.
It was a great piece. So essentially, Greg, if they can get the thing of ours, the cot might be worth what they, more than what they give now.
Exactly.
So then you take the cot, and you put it in your new ambulance, and you don't have to buy a cot for your new ambulance. And you turn around and sell the chassis that way, and you potentially keep your SCAP, your three sitting right. You'd be buying one potentially for a cot, that's if you chose to do it.
Part of it.
Yeah, those cots are worth what, right, fifteen thousand?
Twelve, fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That, the cot is worth more than ambulance.
So you could potentially save the twelve, fifteen thousand when you purchased your new ambulance. I think that is their theory, now whether or not that would all work out just so. I don't know if that's a gamble you're willing to take.
Always.
Those deals always work.
They have.
Trust me.
Wait. I don't recall when Kevin was here, when we were talking about that ambulance, did they even have an interest in it? I don't recall that. I don't recall them saying, yes, we have an interest in that third ambulance.
I think their feeling was that if all you're talking about is an ambulance, they're lucky to keep what they know.
Mm-hmm.
But the cot changes that equation some.
Right.
Further, I have, we gather having a new ambulance.
Well, sure, yeah.
We don't need two hundred plus thousand.
I'd rather keep what we know what we got, rather than buying somebody else's.
So, I.
So, yeah, so that whole discussion of the new ambulance hasn't even come to our take, well, what's it be and what it's going to cost?
So we're not going to be bidding on that option at this point.
As far as ambulance.
Not unless, not unless you ask me to, because I don't have the budget authority to do it, and then.
That's what I'm, money, I think, no, because.
We had the discussion, Archer had been here, they're.
I encourage, I encourage Archer to, if they were going, if they wanted to sell it, just to, is to sell it, uh, like at bigiron.com or something where they can get as, uh, as much for it as possible. And then use that to help pay for three thousand a year, or the, the twenty eighty agreement that Micah is working on. But the twenty eighty agreements will be, be coming back very soon, Mike, for your considerations. We'll talk more about it then.
I think before we might give the thirty minutes, we have a lot of in-house.
Oh, excellent.
Discussion of housing within departments.
Excellent.
Talking from inside the departments, that's going to be a whole discussion.
And it's, and a council vote to a panel.
Because of the lack of solution.
Well, because of the cost, you have to, you have to have a, a vote.
Okay.
And it's over.
It's twofold, it's cost and line expense.
Yes, yeah.
All right, so.
So if you, if you want to just move on, then we just keep it as it is.
All agree?
All agree to.
Yeah.
The two cop cars coming out of that note?
Yes, it's, the way it's set from the vote earlier tonight.
Okay, so leave it the way we're set.
Leave it as, as it is. I think it was good that you brought this up, because it reminds everyone that local option truly matters.
I'm sure Mr. Jerome, I don't know if it's true, but so to me, it's going to be really the way I guess it'd be a little more convenient for you to have more paperwork coming out of it.
I don't.
Okay.
As there's any other, there's no other budget items.
Right. Any other budget?
I'll wait for Greg to come back to you, but.
Yeah, you guys didn't have to leave it to him, couldn't see him.
No, no other budget items, that means that.
This one, we didn't list.
That was approved?
That was item one.
Yeah, I thought you knew.
That was, that was, that was approved by consensus.
We'll wait until Greg gets back, and then move on to the next step, the next item.
The last one.
The last, the next and the last item, there you go.
Best for last kind of a council?
Thank you, yes, absolutely. There's still sandwiches over there, maybe one, two for take. Cookies, they're really good.
Take some of these.
Yeah, the entities.
Somebody's having one.
That's not me, that's not you. It's a music.
No, it's not, it's, it's.
Um, I think as long as you got the consensus, that gives Angie enough, I think that would typically be.
Right, she can put the numbers in and play.
And how she can do it, just, just so the council understands that consensus is pretty safe.
It's a long time.
Well, you wanted to declare.
Oh, come on!
Yeah, consensus.
We don't, we don't want to come back in two weeks and change everything, we just.
We'll count it.
You can have a long period of this one.
Yeah.
We may have without this time.
Consensus is hard to achieve sometimes.
Absolutely. Run, uh.
Brad, would you agree?
So.
Very much so.
Yeah.
So I do have options.
No.
It's okay, I know where you're going.
Yes, you.
That would be good, the items.
All right. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Ooh, those onions, jeez.
I'm kidding.
Hold me.
You can use run the water pipe. Well, I can. Different sharing issue.
So as, before we move on to the last item, as I, I have to cover these onions, because it's just going to be a bit much. But before we move on, onto the last item with Mid-American and Mark and Craig here, um, items eight, A, numbers one through six, um. Go ahead, let's, we're.
Here, here's my, here's my suggestion for a motion, uh, someone would make a motion to accept the general fund cuts outlined in number one, accept option number four regarding employee health insurance, accept the, uh, the scat salaries as presented, and move forward with the TIP balance paid out.
Because there's no consensus on.
Six for just the.
Six really good, okay. Would someone like to make that motion? So we're not doing it by general consensus?
I'll move.
Thank you. Tom, thank you. You ready to do a roll call?
Sure.
Roll call please. Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Eels.
Aye.
Mr. Gint.
Aye.
Thank you. The last item that we're going to start with today is a discussion with, uh, Mid-American, you're going to, uh, franchise agreement, um, for gas and electric. Thanks, Mark, for coming back, and.
Glad to be here.
Hopefully the weather will cooperate for your journey home. If not, well, Karen's got a nice house, but, I'm just kidding, in two beautiful places. Um, yeah, we thank you for coming back up and finish our discussions or further, I should say, if we're not going to be finished. Further discussions on what a franchise agreement and fees could look like. I know, you know, Brad had a few questions, but before I allow him to pose those questions, because he just took a bite of his cookie. Um, one of the questions that I have, that I would like to pose on behalf of the council of the city is, moving forward with the franchise agreement and fees, where does Mid-American come into the play when it comes to communicating with our public, our residents, our businesses? Sharing that word so we get the right information out there.
I'm sure the, the media will help with that regard. Um, Mid-American could do a press release, you're talking about just community, communicating.
Right, right, where do you come into play in there?
And we do put out, it's on the bill, it's, uh, thirty days, I think, before it's implemented. We just say something to the effect of, you will be noticing on your next bill statement that, uh, the city of Sheldon has implemented life percentage franchise fee. If you have any questions, call us.
Okay. And then you take those phone calls and your staff is prepared to answer.
The city can.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to.
I don't know if that really generates a lot of calls, but it's a good way to tell people what's going.
Exactly.
But I mean, obviously with the media coverage you've had so far in the conversations, I think saying, I'm all new at that.
Sure.
It's getting up.
Right, right, and that's, that's the, just the biggest component of this whole puzzle is making sure that we're getting the information out to our public and the right information out to our public as we are pursuing what can be best for the city. So, Brad, did you want to ask a few questions that you, you and I had talked earlier? I was going to try to ask those for you, but I'm so glad you're here.
Just have a question, um, go with the franchise fee. How does our system compare to other towns like Rock Valley that have a franchise fee? Do they get upgrades faster than a town without a franchise fee? Our franchise agreement?
Not definitely, no. Okay.
That's not how we do this.
Okay.
We basically treat every community.
Okay.
The same, and then as a specific need, you know, if Sheldon needs something, that's what we'll do. And if Rock Valley needed something, that's what we do.
Okay, and then another question, um, you talked about sometimes with developments, um, last time, you guys put in, if there's an upgrade, you guys take care of that stuff. Now, how about new developments? Are, when we read it downtown, we have to pay for the electrical upgrades. With the franchise fee, do you guys take care of that?
So, for developments, like we done pass residential, commercial, like.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll all be the same, and that's part of our tariff we have with IP.
Okay.
So every community has that the same, again, treating everybody the same, so that, that doesn't change.
We pay it upfront, and you're remanaging, but you have a lot.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So for the twenty line developments, you know, you pay all the costs upfront.
Upfront, as you sell a lot, okay. I didn't know if that would change if you had a franchise.
It's all the same, just treating everybody the same.
Yeah, it's over a ten-year period.
Ten-year period. Yeah, okay. Other question?
And a lot of that against, dictated by the utilities board, that's much our operation.
Brad, I think when you talk about downtown, you're talking about street lights.
Yes, and I don't, I believe the upfront.
That's from the street lights, Craig, I'll let you, they're there for capital and the utilities upgrades.
Yes, and I'd have to go from memory from down talent here. I guess I want to say without looking.
I'm sure, because I, because I thought we had to pay for the electrical upgrades in that project.
That was the only electric in that project was, was the street.
I was typically, you do, like, uh, like, you know, the bulk of typically, we do that for the cost, it's just you're probably randomly, randomly, so you usually don't pay for that upfront.
I'm not sure if we did or not.
I don't, I want to say I did. I don't want to say because I don't.
I, I know there was some talk about electrical was in it, wasn't in it, uh, it's been quite a few years, perhaps, I just, just curious.
No, but that'd be pretty much all the same, it's, it's how it would come.
It is about the point that you do not pay for street lights.
Yeah.
Just pay for utilities.
Okay.
Okay.
Same for a street light replacement, like we did on highway. We already paid for it if it gets out of date, or out of.
Maintenance, renovation fee.
Correct, correct, the only thing we paid for on the highway is when we switched to Holloway, we used a highway with one plan. So we paid some for some of those heavy structures. Um, but then the rest of the city, we did, as they do your maintenance, and Mid-American drove it down.
Yep.
Now, could we request that you do some town or two shots, you would have asked for some, but since we didn't build that road.
Yep.
Just a question.
Yep. So, one of the, uh, keys in talking about franchise agreement and fee also is establishing, like Sam and I have talked about, the why. Why, why is this something that we believe is a city, some of the information. Why, why is this something that we believe as a city, some of the information being in city council or staff, the capital improvement plans, just on the emergency side itself, I feel justifies the pursuit of that and, and seeing what a, what the fees would generate at whatever different levels. Um, Sean couldn't be here, Sean Brewster, but he did provide us an email. He crunched some numbers I just would like to share on his behalf since he can't be here, but, um, uh, he crunched some numbers and his email said, um, I ran the figures to the best of my ability and this is what I've come up with. And the reason I'm sharing this is this will help us to lead into a better workshop of discussing franchise agreement fees. But, he said if the police would go about one point five million miles in a twenty-year stretch, using a three-vehicle system at a total of seventy-five thousand miles per year during twenty years, if we can get a hundred and fifteen thousand miles out of each vehicle, this is a lot of math, we're looking at thirteen vehicles. So at a cost of fifty-five thousand, we would need seven hundred and fifty, fifteen thousand dollars. Fire based off the sheet from the fire department, he just used three point one eight million dollar mark as far as their recycling of upgrading the fire trucks and different, uh, fire vehicle apparatuses. Scat, assuming we purchase a third ambulance, I figure we can do a rotation and keep the miles regulated, allowing us the ability to purchase a new ambulance every fourth year. Cutting the average in the middle at about a hundred and seventy thousand and purchasing five vehicles at a twenty year with a total of eight hundred and fifty thousand. Adding these figures gives us in the neighborhood four point seven million or an average of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar over twenty years. And that's just under vehicles of our emergency services. So that in a nutshell, I'll, I'm impressed with his numbers and that he did this because really, I had to read through a few times just to make it all make sense, but it just reiterates the need that we have as a city to go to investigate how can we fund just the emergency services. So, Sam and I were talking and he shared this email, and one of the things that we had talked about and kind of shared was, we could go into a more detailed workshop on February twenty, you like Sheldon so much.
I do, I'd love to come back.
I'd like that, and I hope everybody's up to that day. But what, what we see, what we envision could happen at that, uh, workshop after our next council meeting was a presentation from the four emergency departments. Now, a lot of that's going to be repetition that we've already heard as far as capital improvements and the needs that their departments have. But it would be key to have all four departments here to express their needs now, future. We can look at what a plan would be to re, you know, cycle the police cars, et cetera. And then that gives us a better figure where we need to be as far as this emergency reserve fund for vehicle and equipment. Um, and that helps us to get to the why is this something that we need to pursue further? And of course have public to share their input. And then on the other hand, it gives, um, Ange and Sam a chance to look into how does that impact our local option sales tax? So, I know we invited you up and it's a little bit of a short conversation unless we have any questions. But what I would like to see in talking with Sam is if we can, having detailed with presentation of the four emergency departments, a little tidbit from the local option sales tax and then discuss further. At what levels will it look like to have a franchise agreement with a fee in place?
Question, it's kind of, we have two issues here. We have a franchise agreement.
Right.
And we have a franchise fee.
Right.
They don't, they somewhat go together, but somewhat don't go together. I think we have to decide if we want to have a franchise agreement with them first and then talk about the, the fee. The way I don't, the way I'm seeing this, two different things.
Well, I.
And we have to have, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but we, we can't have a franchise fee without a franchise agreement.
I understand that.
Okay.
I think we have to decide if we want to franchise first.
I see.
Before we can have a fee.
Yep.
Other side of the court, you can't have a franchise agreement without a franchise fee.
Sure. Yes, you can.
Yes.
Right, have anybody that does that?
Yes, we do. Yeah, actually, it's, it'd be more on the other way. We have a lot more communities that don't have franchise fees in place than do have franchises. Uh, I think we have sixty and I think one, read somewhere, I don't know, it was an email you and I had, like, I think it was a hundred and seventy-six.
Well, that, that.
There's a hundred and seventy-seven.
Yeah, right.
So.
So there's a hundred and seventy-seven communities in Iowa that have franchise fees in place. There's. They have franchise agreements, but there's a lot more that have franchise fees, agreements than, than do fees. There's only a hundred and seventy-seven that have fees. And I don't know how many counties are. Cities are high.
See, a nine hundred.
Um, of the hundred and seventy-seven, I think there are about sixty of them are. Then you have a Lion and the Lycos as well.
And you also have cities that are fully municipal.
They don't have fees.
Understood, but there's a reason they don't have fees because they already have utility.
But they're not part of that hundred and seventy-seven.
I, I understand, I just want to make sure.
I do too, yes, yeah.
Everybody's grasping the same.
Yeah, I agree.
There's not another city similar to this.
And I, I also look at this as growing pains. We have been forward-moving, the city of Sheldon has been progressing. And as I look at this as part of our growing pains, but right now, the struggle I feel that we have, we, we talked with Sam, and is we're almost in a competition when it comes to emergency service regarding economic development. And if we don't figure something out sooner, then in the next year, we're not going to be able to maintain where we're at. And eventually, it might come to where things have to be cut. And I, and I'm not saying that like, oh, you have to do this, but it, this, we really need to look into a revenue source to help. And we can specify it. If this is something that we want to look into, it can be, we can decide, you, the council, need to go, what money, what that gets used for. Now, everyone in the city of Sheldon has access to emergency services. Everyone in the city of Sheldon has access to their utilities. And talking with the general public, we all get to use it. Some, you know, many of us don't have to use emergency services, I can get us there for you. But my point is, we can decide if that's something we want to look into and pursue. It's a decision council can make if all those monies are just for emergency services. Vehicle, equipment, whatever.
What are the restrictions?
On the use of those funds? And what are the restrictions on the use of lost funds?
Um, I'll, I'll address the restrictions on lost funds and Mark can help me with the restrictions on the franchise one. The orders of Sheldon in nineteen ninety-five approved the local option, uh, sales tax and, uh, thirty-seven and a half percent is to go to pay the trust agency levy to help keep, um, the property tax levy in check. And then the other sixty-two and a half percent can go to community betterment, which is fairly broad.
Sam?
With.
Forgot about property casualty.
Oh, yeah. Help me out.
The thirty-seven and a half percent, it, it pays the property casualty insurance first. And then whatever balance is left goes to pay down the trust agency.
Thank you.
Then, then you got your.
And then the, the fran, the franchise revenue purpose statement, Mark, help me out, help me out with that. I would say it's a little broader than that, um, pretty much. And I think I provided that in, you know, for, for you guys, and I did actually, I think I gave Sam and Michael one now, just to grasp. But, I mean, it does talk about police and fire equipment and protection, property tax relief, construction repair of streets, highways, bridges, street lighting fixtures, acquisition of real estate. I think they wanted cities to have the capability of using the funds for what you think you need.
We would have the right to narrow that down.
You would.
As we write our ordinance.
Right, that is true.
Or you could do the generic one and you just note the fact that you want it, the emphasis is going to be on police fire and, uh, and, so. Something like that.
Yes, yes.
Then you're not restricted in the future. And, and all the money from, uh, franchise fee goes into a separate account so that it's, if you need to buy a police car or it comes out of franchise fee account, it doesn't come out of general fund.
Right. And, and so that is up to you, us, to determine what that ordinance would look like. Go ahead, Sam.
My line there. So, Mark, Hull and Rock Valley and I think Irtin, three other north west Iowa communities that I'd like to have. Cherokee does too, I don't know about that one. The other, the other three specifically Hull and Rock Valley. They have the broader purpose revenue statement, you know? I think they all do. I know Irtin and Cherokee has the total one that I've probably discussed. And Hull, like I said, they want to use the money primarily for pool when they did it five, six years ago. But I believe they did the generic one. Because again, once the pools pay off, if they want to keep doing the fee, what are you going to spend the money?
So Brad, um, you know, step one, franchise agreement, franchise fee. Is that something that we are interested as a council with the four of you? I, I have spoke to Sean and being little, we had just a little conversation before that being, he would entertain that workshop on the twentieth to get into a more detailed of a franchise agreement and fee presentation from the departments and then do we know yet how that impacts the loss or is that something we have to find out when the loss goes away?
More information.
Yeah, so we have a better understanding of that then too.
The example I gave you was based on twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen usage after Monday, it was the estimate of the years. I mentioned Sam a few minutes ago, I'll go back tomorrow and divide them just for twenty sixteen separately, twenty seventeen separately, twenty eighteen. And kind of see where those three years will impact. Did you want me to go into the timing of if, if all things work forward, um, how long would it take? Or, do you want to not do that tonight? Yeah, I mean, just briefly, basically.
Clock doesn't start tonight.
Right, let's say you, at the February twentieth, want to have a public hearing, so it's when your next meeting, you have the public hearing. At the public hearing, then you can also pass first reading, like you do every other ordinance. So ultimately, when you get the third reading done, um, we would need ninety days from that time before we can. We also have a self-imposed rule of law doing three in communities a month. Just because it's a pretty good volume of work to go through all the accounts of Sheldon.
Sure.
So, if it happened to be that you got everything done by the end of April, and we need ninety days from that. Unless there's another couple of communities.
Sure, understandable.
Because like we're looking at Johnson, Iowa right now, and Johnson's southern of Des Moines, it's larger, so it's going to take a little longer to do that. And right now, I think you want, that I can think of is Johnson's looking at it and Eagle Grove.
And, and, we can get into it more later too, but I did ask about schools last time that we were together chatting. And, um, I would like to find out for sure about the schools, like, do these schools are exempted, uh, private as well?
We will.
We can, and that's our decision?
Yes. We have a couple of communities that do both public school, al- almost, I shouldn't say that. Um, a number of them do the public schools and a few more do public.
I guess I just wanted to get it one more time. That's okay.
So they can be exempt even though you're not in a class of the.
Yes, because they're.
Because you have three classes, right?
You got the residential, you got commercial, and you got industrial.
We kind of love the commercial and, um, now, uh, industrial together, it's non-residential.
But you can't.
But you could pull those aside. Basically, it'd be quasi-governmental. Some com, uh, cities actually do some county, obviously just don't. So if you had a county, say, in Cherokee or town, you could exempt that as well if you. Quite a lot in county, Council of Los does that.
And again, if you looked at your bills now, as Sam and I are just chatting, um, look at your next Mid-American bill and you'll see there's a one percent on gas and one percent on electric. That goes to our local option sales tax. If we pursue this and we do decide to go with a fee, that comes off. And then the new comes in, that's why we need to talk with Ange and figure out then, how does that affect? Yeah, exactly.
Probably needs a little consideration in how we define scope.
Right.
As well, because if we are taking local option sales tax away after what we're doing with it today, probably going to want to have some ability to redirect some of that monies if we want to towards community betterment, so. Though I think the main focus on how it varies on emergency services. I think that we, very well, back to the community betterment too.
So.
I, I have one thing I'd like to add to.
Yes.
Way back when you were starting off, we were talking about having the departments come at the next two percent. What I don't have, you know, Sean's figures are great. What I don't have is, is how does that lay out year after year after year after year? And how can the departments all put together a plan that they can all live with? That matches what we're proposing to do with those months. So that we're not sitting there trying to figure out how we're going, we're going to have a million dollars worth of expenditure one year and we've got forty-eight dollars and fifty cents in, in the fund. So I would like to see the departments kind of work that out too.
Right.
So that we have that structure to really look at. Because we're going to have to start, if we're going to really look at this, we're going to start looking at what case of one percent is, two percent is, and three percent.
Is it straight across?
Yeah, and I think we have to talk about industrial, commercial, non-residential, more, star residential, something like that. But, but if we're really looking at emergency services, then I think we really need to see what's in our books because in my head already, I'm thinking that there's going to be a little trouble on the fire side. On the fire equipment side. Because in the next five years, then there's two minutes somewhere in there.
And you go twenty years, twenty-year plan, we're going to have that new truck in there that we just don't even have, we just working on the note. We'll have that to be replaced in twenty years.
So, so I think it's good for each department to look at.
And some of our stuff, we have an idea because it's fifteen years on our air tanks, air packs, and they're obsolete.
And you, and fires kind of have that in place.
You know, helmets, gear, you know? So we know some of this stuff, we just have to, maybe we got to get that a little bit farther into that fifteen.
Increment.
Space and how this all works. And some of it's, it's just going to be an estimate, you know?
Sure.
If I might make a suggestion to help keep the research manageable is, you know, we already have a five-year chat with the group in place. You and I have talked, Mark, about, about the idea of you, of what draft you gave me was a fifteen-year agreement. If Mid-American would be willing to do a ten-year agreement, we could bring forward a ten-year capital improvements plan at, at, for those four departments at the next meeting. And it also allows us to say very honestly is that Sheldon would be the only community in the state that Mid-American is willing to do a ten-year agreement with or to get an agreement in place. And then we have something that's more manageable in terms of putting together the numbers.
Right.
Because when you get beyond ten years, you have major technology changes and your personnel, it's really tough to come up with with accurate numbers. Ten years, that's relatively easy. Would you support a, a ten-year agreement?
Have to go back and chat with the people. As we talked about, you know, the minimum way out right now.
I just tweeted on the spot.
And we talked about fifteen-year agreement with language to reopen in five or ten. So in theory, you're giving, we're giving you a ten-year franchise, five-year franchise. But in reality, it would go on fifteen if, if nobody
If we don't have the authority to talk about it. Right, got it.
Has the rest of the council supported that? Has the rest of the council supported that moving forward with the franchise agreement?
Yeah, I'd like to see how all the numbers work out, but I think we need to look at.
I'm just talking, you know, enter agreement.
What I think that too is, we almost have that right now, but in the gentleman's. Who said that last time? Greg, was that you who said it's more of a gentleman's move that we have with some of the things that Mid-American doesn't have for you now? Now it would just be the formation of a, of a short period.
The question I have, I've had since we started this discussion is, in my eighth year and up until two, maybe three years ago, we didn't have concerns like this. What has changed from then in my eight-year term? What has changed that everything is becoming, it's a part of the people?
Do you want to try to do better planning? Better planning?
We bought ambulances, we bought fire trucks, we bought police cars all along. What, why now is it such a, is there, are they that much more expensive? You mentioned technology, is that what's driving it? The money is there, we're going to spend it?
Greg, I think, I think one thing that we're, and Brad, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the fire department is finally implementing their twenty-year plan because the truck you just replaced.
We're replacing this.
Was, was like a seventy-something, we just got rid of. So they were not on a twenty-year plan, now they're trying to get to that, which has really hit that account hard. So when we were buying hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy thousand dollar ambulances and forty thousand dollar cop cars, it wasn't so serious. You start throwing half million dollar fire trucks in the mix, it depleted the account. That's what's changed.
The twenty-year old.
In my opinion, that's what's changed.
The twenty-year-old truck was three hundred and sixty-five thousand, now it's five hundred and fifty-two thousand.
So I think cost too.
Plus, we're also taking, I remember what I did, take the full-time EMT, paramedics out of the ambulance transfer fund? I thought that got. Out of the transfer fund, I thought they started taking that salary out of there.
I thought the salary come out in like one month, but I'd have to pay it.
Sixty-nine thousand.
That's easy to find out. But you're right, if it did, that would also affect it.
That would affect it, sure.
And, and we're growing, our budget is growing, I mean, how many more new employees to bring out that we haven't had in the past year?
But so is our tax base. So why aren't they keeping up?
I think we're putting that into place.
Because the, the, what we bought was the emergencies, for emergency services come out of that transfer fund and the stuff's getting more expensive. What we're buying is more expensive. I mean, bunker pants and coats, um, eighteen hundred dollars.
That doesn't have anything to do with tax base, which you're talking about, because you're talking about it different.
Well, we, with our money, I take.
Please, please, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have, we have depended heavily on tax saving from the financing for economic development, which has been very successful for us. And that's what Mayor was referring to earlier, that we have a candle burning that will fend your economic development, not the emergency services for the same pot. And, you know, our, it's already been established as a goal to, impossible, so especially starting in twenty twenty-one, the twenty seventeen C-bond is callable to start removing some areas from like the rung or addition, remove it completely from, from TIF and putting it back on the tax rolls. And so that's, that's one of the, one of the forces that's involved in this, impacting this discussion.
So I'm on record right here though saying, TIF, TIF is a problem and it'll heal itself in time. But we're not there yet because we haven't paid off the debt. And I think that's what you're trying to say, right, Sam? Once we pay off the debt, you release the TIF history, you provide general fund money along with other tax money, but we're a little deep.
Let me add just another dimension to it too, and we talked about it in the last session. When Tom was sitting there, and we kept putting him on the spot about fixing roads. And he was saying, well, that's fine, but you know how much that's going to cost and where's the money going to come from? There's a lot of roads that got kicked down, cans got kicked down, you know, the road, no, but basically, we've ignored it to the point where we need to do something about it. And that's going to take some money that we have not designated independently. So how are we going to, how are we going to do that in the midst of trying to keep up with emergency services? And, and continue our development, you know, aggressive development and stuff like that? Those are, those are the things that are really changing, not C-B, because, I mean, if we're talking millions of dollars to really get into our street structures and we got infrastructure to take care of that, we got water pipes and stuff like that.
And to that point, Tom, those are all the roads, the water, all that, we may use TIF for those. There are certain areas that I would just assume you didn't take out a TIF until we got a little more work in on those areas. If it's some of the older areas, because otherwise, what funding source do you have right now to go do a million dollar street job? Or, or as we mentioned, even the water fund, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar water meter program, or a two and a half million dollar water tower.
But that's another long-term plan that we don't have the funds, honestly. To sit there and understand what this is really going to look like.
A lot of that's in CIP.
Right.
That was adopted.
So that, and that's something I said earlier, some of this will be repetition of what we're seeing because we've already got a lot of that in place with our five-year capital improvement plan. But let's extend that out to ten, fifteen, twenty-two, get a better picture and window, when to expect those bigger, you know, the ebbs and flows for replacing equipment and vehicles. And whatever emergency services we deem to be.
I would recommend, I have a direction that is proportionate to the length of the agreement, which would be fifteen years. We already have five years, we'll work, work on that a little bit, add ten and fifteen presentations from four departments, all put a sheet together. And so to move forward on the discussion, we could consider a motion to set through a shot for February twentieth. Here, a summary proposal from all four emergency services departments on a fif, a fifteen-year plan. And also here from the clerk's office, Sydney, on the impactful option sales tax.
And there we can.
We'd invite Mid-American back.
Well, in terms of fee, of course, it's going to pretty much stay the same every year, any legal, as you feel. And actually, we have tax names, just like we just, and I give her the opportunity to detect these numbers for the twentieth, but you guys keep asking about loss.
Right.
So the estimated revenue loss is six hundred and forty thousand. If you lost one percent, you would lose, as Brad mentioned at the last meeting, you would lose one hundred and twenty-five thousand, based on the sheets that Mark provided. So that would take you down to five fifteen, thirty-seven and a half percent of five fifteen is one ninety-three, twenty-five. Our property and casualty insurance is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year, that would leave twenty-three thousand dollars for trusted agency. Currently, on the budget, there's seventy thousand dollars in trusted agency. So that would be somewhat the effect on potentially. I think questions you guys have here is can you somehow supplement it?
Right.
Is that fair to say?
You'd have to have a broader revenue purpose statement to be able to replenish local option sales tax.
Right.
And the thing you could do is say one percent of it goes to.
Back to the lost.
Lost fund.
And the rest.
And whatever percentage we decide goes into the emergency reserve fund.
You could do that, right? I defer Mike on that, we let him research that.
That'd be our bookkeeping as we got the check.
I would do so, but yeah, but we would have.
Yes, it does say property tax relief, so we could take whatever we want, ten percent of the franchise fee input for that, for your life, then, to affect your life.
Correct, this, this scenario, losing that one percent would affect your living now.
So you have to decide what the different areas, and I guess that's what they give you at the franchise.
And those numbers are all change, just to give you guys a rough.
So departments are sitting, thinking of buying everything from.
Well, of course.
Okay, so Mark, one question I have real quick too, so city, go ahead with the franchise fee, they implement a safety percent for residential. What does it take if they decide, we're going to let it go to five percent? Say, you know what, run three percent today, but next year we want to go over to four or five percent, what, what's the procedure in doing that?
You could do it when the new agreement is done, I think I talked about stair stepping it, you do it every year, one percent. Or let's say you do three percent from the get-go for residential and one percent non-residential. Six months to a year, you decide you want to do something different, we just, we would have to amend that section thirteen or fourteen.
So essentially something the council could approve.
Council would have to take, it'd be similar to approving the new agreements, you'd have to have a new public hearing, three readings, that would change. But we have that community to do that. The agreement says we'll only do that every two years, but we'll be as flexible as we can. We have done it in less than two years sometimes.
So there's not just, so.
I'm going to give them directions to work on a franchise agreement. Ten-year, fifteen-year?
Well, we already have the, we already have the draft in our proposal in our.
What are our other options?
What's that?
Franchise. What are our other options?
We don't do franchise.
Are we doing that because that's the easiest route? Or is there something else out there we should consider?
Where's the emergency service? My two cents is for this, everybody's paying for it because everybody uses emergency services.
That has some attraction for me.
Otherwise, you throw the burden back on to all the property.
Not everyone.
I guess I'd like to give a direction to work on a franchise fee, or a franchise agreement.
Review that next time we're together, what we have.
I guess I would play the devil's advocate, advocate and flip that and say, for me, maybe it's more important to decide if we want to do a franchise, than them to decide if we want to do a franchise. Without that, we're getting along fine, right?
I agree.
Attraction to me, unless I get something that convinces me differently.
And, and.
I realize there's a lot of things spoken about. Yes. I think that we have to, I think that we have to look at some kind of ultimate funding for some of this stuff. I don't, I would defer to somebody else. Everyone can modify some of that. Change the rates among those categories, make sure we're competitive, et cetera, and so on. One way or another, just about everyone protects helping with that service. So that has some attraction to me personally.
And part of that goal planning session in December of two thousand seventeen, that was one of our items that we were ready to take action on, was to pursue.
That's this process, we want it looks like what we're doing.
No, so when we go into this workshop in two weeks, if that's what we take a motion on to do, is not to implement it, is to discuss, let's get the why's, let's find out why do we need this? Let's, let's get that fifteen-year plan out there of what are the needs so that we're not taken back by large purchases? We can see more of a regular flow of replacement and updating of equipment for emergency services and having implants. Establish the why and how we can do that, and one of the ways we can possibly do it is through the franchise agreement fee.
I'm asking this question because I anticipate what's going to happen on the street once we get the funding along.
Why are you doing that?
It would be a voice in the mess.
Right.
You call a franchise, even if it's a tax.
Oh, yeah.
Like doubles up.
Right, so.
Why are you doing that, not giving me a vote on?
And they can, and that's why we'll have public.
I want to have an answer.
But they'll have a chance, but that's just a secret. So let's say we get to our workshop next time we're together and we decide, this is what we want to look into. We're going to have public hearings before it goes into our ordinances. And that's why communication is going to be so key. Yes, they're going to hear fee and it's tax, tax fee. Yeah, they're going to be paying a little bit more, but at the same time, if we don't do something.
They're talking about what we're going to cut.
We're going to have to find ways to sit on some things and we're not going to be a forward moving community anymore. Reality sucks, but it's a growing pain and we can, there is a light to get through this, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, we just got to figure it out.
That's just our responsibility. And so if you look at, if you look at my, my head and look at the messaging path on this, because we talked about what our needs are going to be. And then we determine whether those needs can be afforded. And then if we can afford them without any increase in revenue, if we can't, then we start looking at what really is going to be. But what leads the whole thing is the need, not the fee.
Exactly.
If we lean off of the fee and then try to substantiate it, then, then we're not doing our jobs right. We need to determine what's the need and how, how best is, can we govern to, to match that?
That's fair.
To the community, because that's exactly what they're going to, they want to know that before. If all their thing about why the fee, then we haven't done our job, we haven't messaged them, we haven't shown the community what the deal is again, so.
So at our workshop, that's, that's where we're going, we're going to, we're going to need whys, we're going to address the whys and the needs for this.
It's essentially a mini fifteen-year budget session for four departments.
And that's why we need to kind of have a structure so it looks like.
Right, and the other thing is, we don't need to be ramrodding anything down the calendar. We will do the due diligence, that's what we're supposed to do as elected officials, is sit back, make sure we have all the information so that we can go forward with what's best for Sheldon and then give the public the information they need and hear back from them. So this isn't a fast forward and next time we meet, we're having a franchise fee. It'll take its time. So with that said, do we want to have a workshop? Is someone willing to make a motion for a workshop on February twentieth to further discuss the possible, the franchise agreement, what it'll look like? And a franchise fee as well as department's presentations? Yeah, where are you going, let's not talk about that. You, wait, before you leave, is that information that you can work on to get to us with Sam?
Well, Sean already helped you and I with paramount of it, worked with you on that for the next year or so. I guess you've got a little work to do with your next.
Chop chop, then you go away.
That's what happens when you have top dog.
I never signed off on that either. I think that was denied, your request. We'll work on that and I'll, if I can come in a little more often.
One page, you know, if you're, if you're estimated cost per year.
Thanks for that. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Greg. Ms. Pat, Mr., are you ready to do a local?
Right.
All right.
Beels.
You don't have to say Mr. Earl.
It's so fun.
Eggers.
I, I won't complicate you, right?
All right, thank you, thank you again, Mark Craig, for being here.
Yeah, thank you so much.
To facilitate, so do you want us to work with Sam and Micah on an agreement? I mean, we have given you ours, so that's where Mid-American is.
Right. Right.
Now, if Micah and Sam need to tweak that document, at least you have that.
Exactly, you have that information to us. Now we need Sam to work with Micah on, on some of those questions that we had. Okay. Great, um, anything, sorry, Frankie, are you ready to leave? I think we're ready to leave, but we should adjourn first.
I was going to ask a question after a while.
Oh, okay, do you want me to adjourn first or do you have a question now?
How long are you going to be before you adjourn?
Right now. We're going to adjourn, is, is, do you want me, do you want to wait till after we adjourn?
No, I just had a question on that motion. It was some time ago, how much will I have?
Motion to set a workshop for February twentieth to hear a fifteen-year summary.
No, there, there was a motion earlier after you were talking about loss and debt and give. To approve, it was to approve the budget recommendations.
Yes, Sam will go over that with you after we adjourn.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
I was going to finally get that done.
Got you, okay.
But you've got more to do.
All right, who makes the motion to adjourn?
So who?
And second? Thank you, roll call, eyes all, eyes and fingers. Put on the post.